Call to order the Delaware County Commissioners Meeting of Monday, October 3rd, 2022. It's now 9:01. Please stand if you wish for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. Rule call, please. Mr. King?
Here.
Mr. Henry?
Here.
Ms. Regan?
Present.
Mr. Brick?
Here.
Mr. Krikraft is absent. Ms. Patterson is absent. Ms. Dunsmore here. Ms. Smith here. Thank you, Ms. Dunsmore. Welcome to the Commissioner's office for your first time. Try to go slow for you today and help you.
Thank you.
We have a public hearing today. John, would you like to fill us in on the public hearing, please?
Yes, this is a public hearing for the vacation of a street in Medford, which was a little town. I even had to learn where it was in Delaware County. Mr. O'Connor?
Good morning, everybody. As John said, my name is Jacob O'Connor. I'm representing the petitioners this morning. Two of them, or one of them is here today, Susan Felton, her husband Jeff. Susan and her brother, Paul Boils, own property there in Medford, as John said. They were actually in the process of selling their, this property to a family member, and the family member's lender raised an issue. I think you guys all have the petition in front of you. If you could take a look at Exhibit A, that's the legal description, and it also shows the layout of the property here. So, my clients own lots 14, 15, 4, and 3. Those four lots on the left side. And the lender, or the potential buyer in this transaction, they raised an issue with the shed and the garage. And it's the two small squares in between lots 14 and 4 on that map. If you see there, that's actually that shed in the garage. It's built over top of what was intended to be an alleyway. It's an unimproved alley that runs in between my clients' two lots, the two lots on the north and two lots on the south side. The alley runs right between those, and it also runs between neighboring, excuse me, neighboring owners for lots. That's, the neighbors are Jesse and Kathy Savannah. I'm not sure if they're here today. Didn't see them, but... There's neither here nor there. Neither here nor there. And then, so essentially, lenders raised an issue because this property is hanging over public property, so we had to get this vacated. That brought us here today. We're asking you to vacate that alleyway. The alleyway also runs in between, it runs north and south, in between my clients' properties to the left side, to the west, and the Savannah's property to the east. And there's also an unimproved street, unimproved Washington Street that runs on the north side of my client's property. So, that's a lot of description. Happy to answer any questions. Try to give you a brief summary about what brought us in here today.
The alley's currently grass, correct?
Yeah, I believe so, right? Yeah.
And this was probably done in the 1800s and...
Oh, yeah. Yeah. I didn't actually go back and see when it was planned, but yeah, it's been there, it's been on the plane for a while.
Okay, thank you very much. Do we have anybody that opposes this, wants to speak?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Rule call, please. Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Regan?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
It's probably been through umpteen lenders, only now it founded in the 21st century that...
Yeah. Okay, going down to table business. What's your pleasure on the ordinance?
I'll make a motion. We remove it from the table.
Second?
Second.
Rule call, please. Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Ms. Regan?
Yes.
The sheriff and I have been...
Jake, Jake. Nope, sit down, sit down, sit down. The sheriff was getting up.
You want to talk about the order, or...
Man, I saw, I thought you...
Sheriff and I have been discussing this ordinance, and he believes he can take care of the issues with the disorderly conduct statute.
That's correct.
Sheriff, you want to elaborate on that?
Sheriff Tony's here. So, Commissioner Henry and I spoke this weekend about, about the proposed noise ordinance. Throughout my career in law enforcement, I have used Indiana's disorderly conduct statute several times, all effectively in court. And basically, the disorderly conduct statute says, "A person commits disorderly conduct when they recklessly, knowingly, or intentionally engage in fighting or tumultuous conduct, make unreasonable noise, and continue to do so after being asked to stop, or disrupts a lawful assembly of persons, and it's a Class B misdemeanor." It goes on with enhancements to be a felony if it's committed on airport property or during a funeral or burial. So, Commissioner Henry and I talked about this, and at this point, I would just like for our deputies to, when situations arise, to fall back onto the state statute instead of having to carry more equipment, to test noise, to have a, you know, a distance or a standoff for noise to be, you know, cited like in your ordinance. And even further than that, Jenny, if you get complaints about things like these, forward those complaints to our department. You know, people, people from the community that call in to complain about noise, the commissioner shouldn't have to deal with that. That should, that should either fall back to the local jurisdiction, the police department, or it should come to the sheriff if it's in an unincorporated area of the county. So, I would just ask that you not pass the noise ordinance and allow our people to fall back on the state statute. I think it has more teeth. It is jailable. It's a misdemeanor. So, that's my two cents worth.
And your telephone number that they would use to call a deputy out is...
Just dispatch.
The dispatch.
Yeah, 747-7878. And furthermore, you know, you guys have already got a barking dog ordinance. So, I mean, that already exists. So, that's my opinion.
So, if you just get the calls, you'll go out and have them investigate it, and if it continues, something will be done, because this is what we're having, is repetition all the time sometimes.
If it's, like I said, this, this state statute says, "Just unreasonable noise." So, if, if they can articulate that, you know, and go in front of a judge and explain why it was unreasonable, you know, it doesn't have any time of day, it doesn't have to be at night or day, this state statute actually applies on private property just as, as in public property. So, it's just a matter of being able to articulate why it was unreasonable to a judge.
And if anybody has an issue, they need to keep a log of how long and how, when, so they can represent themselves.
Yep. And just like trespassing, this has to be, the person has to have been told or asked to stop doing that before. So, you can't go out and cite on the first, on the first offense. They have, you have to tell them to knock it off. And then, if it continues, then it's enforceable.
Another thing, too, people need to, if you get a, have a barking dog next to you or unreasonable noise of some kind, record it on your phones.
Sure.
And then, you know, because my experience, most of the time, as an officer, you get called to the scene, and once you get there, the noise has ceased or stopped. And so, that's just another thing to take to court with you, and another piece of evidence to take to court and win your case. So, you'll meet with your officers and kind of talk to them about why we brought this up.
I certainly will, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I appreciate...
Thank you. Thank you, Tony.
You two working on that, because we don't need more laws on the book, like you say. Okay, thank you very much.
John, do we just need to take this off the table and not even vote on it, or...
It's off the table. It was introduced, I believe. So, you would need to take a vote to remove it or not move it on the second reading.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Rule call, please. Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Regan?
Yes. Okay, thank you very much. Just be a good neighbor. Okay, approval of minutes
of September 19th, please.
So moved. Second.
Rule call, please. Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Ms. Regan?
Yes.
Okay, now we have a presentation about the Indiana Digital Order.
Good morning, Commissioners. I have a representative from Indigital here, also a representative from the State 911 Board to do a presentation to Kyle Johnson, if he could come up here. I'll let Shane, I'll let Shane from Indigital speak. That's fine.
Good morning. My name is Shane Reck. I'm the Indiana Market Manager for Indigital, and we want to present Kyle with an award. It is the Tom Brendel Award. And let me just read a little bit about the Tom Brendel and who he was and why this award's so important. From 1978 to 2001, Tom was a Deputy Sheriff with the Cosiasko County Sheriff's Department. Of his years of service, he was assigned to the Patrol Division and served the last seven years as detective. In 2001, he retired from the Sheriff's Department and was appointed Director for the Cosiasko County 911 System, a position he served until his death. Tom was an avid supporter of technology and its use within 911. To train and to teach, all that could come about the technologies being utilized. This included all facets of 911 services to the public and to the responders supported by the PSAP. He mentored many 911 directors, employees, vendors, and so many others that had an opportunity to meet him. Personally, many Indigital employees during this time period learned how 911 systems needed to work, and more importantly, how to better serve the PSAP. Tom helped to guide this development through critical thinking, a willingness to try, and a desire to make services better by utilizing the tools of technology. PSAPs in Indiana have benefited from his continuous improvement philosophies and the spirit of partnerships utilizing technologies for greater good. Critical services we can take care, take care for granting in Indiana, such as Texty, Mevo, and many early adoptions of NextGen 911 can be traced to the basement of the Cosiasko County Building where the PSAP lives on today. This trend continues and is shared by many PSAPs and continues throughout the state of Indiana. The 911 community serving in Indiana finds new ways to use technology, share ideas, and improve services for all stakeholders every day. We are very proud to be a small piece of this complex puzzle and are, and are positive Tom would approve for our collective efforts. This year, we are honored to highlight several projects and individuals within the state that inspire, inspire what can be done. These efforts include large, complicated projects to individuals on wavering commitment to serve their PSAP with their gifts. And so, you know, like in Indiana here, we actually awarded three of them because Indiana NINA Conference had been canceled because of COVID for two years. And so, we kind of did a catch-up. So, we actually made three awards. One last week at National NINA, and then today, one, and I've got another one later on, hopefully later this month, that will, will be made an app formal presentation. But so, let me, let me just read what was submitted to our company for consideration of Kyle Johnson. The nominator was Fred Cummings. The Delaware County 911 faced many challenges coming into 2022. With a new director and a deputy director coming on board in January, one of the first tasks was, was the COVID-delayed deployment of our new CAD system. The new CAD build wasn't anywhere close to where it should be, and the GeoLive data was set in stone in the middle of June. Kyle Johnson, who is the GIS Coordinator for Delaware County, would prove instrumental in the successful deployment of the new CAD. The task was definitely dawning. He was faced with completely remapping and re... Remapping the entire county to meet the requirements of the county fire and EMS agency. He worked day and night to meet with all the involved parties and complete redo all the mapping. There were hundreds of hours involved. He did it with a smile on his face and never complained. The end result was a completely remapped response map for the entire county. It is impossible for me to portray in short write-up about what a difference this made in the successful launch of the new CAD. Without Kyle's dedication and timeless work, this launch of the new CAD wouldn't have been possible. Kyle is often called upon, not just 911 centers, but many other departments in the county to assist with mapping issues as well as host other assistance. He is truly dedicated to not only his position, but also to the entire county. In addition to GIS work, he is also an instrumental team member of the Emergency Management Department as well. His contribution not only have been integral part of the success of the IIN, or 911 center, but also to the county as a whole. So, with that being said, we want to dedicate the Tom Brendel Award to Kyle Johnson.
Yeah. Kyle is very humble about his job, but we all know how wonderful he is to work with and what all he does do. Congratulations.
That kind of made his face red, too, and he's not usually, he's not usually like that. But thanks, Kyle, for everything you do. And, you know, Kyle's, we've got several employees that, that kind of cross lines of actually what they do every day to make sure the county operates in the way it should. And Kyle's one of those guys that does, does all that. So, we appreciate you, Kyle.
Thanks, Kyle.
Appreciate Fred doing the nomination. Thanks, Fred.
Yeah, thank you, Fred. Appreciate it.
Okay, we're needing to table the John Fallon neighborhood, Farmington neighborhood, could not make it today, so we need to table that. They'd like to come later.
No, the presentations.
The presentation.
So, he just needs to get with Jenny and...
Well, I just thought if we tabled it, then it's ready to go.
We'll just put it on the next one under Presentations again?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Contracts and agreements, the holiday schedule.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second. Jenny, you want to elaborate a little bit?
Sure. So, we had technically lost a day on this one because New Year's Eve falls on a Sunday. So, to kind of remedy that, I added the extra day on July 5th. So, we would have the 4th and 5th off. So, we would still match the same amount of holidays we have currently for this year.
Okay. What's your pleasure?
Before I made a motion, we had to say it.
I seconded it, yeah.
Rule call, please. Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Regan?
Yes. Thank you.
Thanks for working on that, Jenny.
Okay, Enda. John, you want to elaborate on the...
Actually, I think this is Angie for the closure of 67.
Good morning, Commissioners. For several of us been working with Enda as they plan their upcoming bridge replacement project on State Road 28 and 67 over Mississinawal River. With this bridge replacement, the road will be closed to traffic. So, Enda is proposing, well, they have established their official detour to follow State Road 28, State Road 3, State Road 167, and State Road 67. As part of their process, they leave the locals to set an unofficial detour, which if we agree upon it, with the proper documentation, they will pay for the repairs. This is not, when I say unofficial detour, we're not setting signs saying, "Follow this detour." This is roads most likely people use to avoid following the detour route.
Yeah.
So, after multiple discussions, an agreement came for Old Granville Road between State Road 67 and Blacksmill Road, and Blacksmill Road between Old Granville and State Road 67. So, if you agree, there's a letter to be signed and to accept or reject this unofficial detour.
We've had several conversations with Enda. We tried to get them to, just to lane restrictions on this bridge. We tried to get them to put a stoplight on it to redo it, and they, they've refused to do all of that. This is going to be a complicated closure. And we're, we're working, the engineering department, the highway department, everyone's worked together to try to come up with a plan to try to hopefully have minimal damage like usually occurs on these state highway closures, but this will be a complicated one. I'll make a motion. We approve this document.
Thank you. Rule call, please. Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Ms. Regan?
Yes, thank you. We hope those 120 days go real fast.
Hope so.
And get it up and finished.
We'll be adding a lot of additional signage to...
Good.
Try to keep traffic off these roads at all possible.
We also have our ordinance you passed last year to limit trucks on these roads, which will help a lot.
Yeah. And we plan on putting the no truck signs up, too, on various roads in that area.
Okay, ordinance number 2022-023.
This is the ordinance for the vacating of the alleys of the street in Medford that you had the public hearing about.
So, is this, is this introduction, then?
This is introduction, yes.
I'll make a motion in our news.
Second.
Rule call, please. Sir. Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Ms. Regan?
Yes. Thank you.
Because they're involved in a real estate transaction, I would ask that the Commissioner suspend the rules to approve this.
Motion to suspend the rules.
Rule call, please. Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Regan?
Yes.
I make a motion. We adopt the ordinance.
Second.
Rule call, please. Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Ms. Regan?
Yes. Thank you very much. Okay. Department heads, elected officials?
Yes, there was a special event registration or special event notice form that was provided to the Commissioners for an event on October 29th and 30th. Jerome and Cindy Benefield are having an event called Grace and Mercy Full Gospel Church Fall Bash. Under the ordinance, they adopted or sent in a registration form, and this just needs to be approved by the Commissioners.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Rule call, please.
Thanks.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Regan?
Yes.
It's located at 5015 East State Road 28.
Are they closing any local roads for this?
I don't believe so, no.
If they do, they seem to apply for a permit through my office.
I think they're just holding it there at the church.
Thank you. Is Mr. Humbert here today?
Hi, Commissioners. Tommy Humbert, County Highway Department. I've got Bobby Doherty with me, who's over the sign department. There's a couple of roads that I would like for you guys to consider, like not doing a road study on. They're pretty much no brainers, and for the safety aspect of it, I feel like I'd like to get it changed as soon as possible. The first one is from, on McGalliard Road. Schick's has put in a new dumping site there, and actually, I think me and you, Shane, went out there when they put the guardrail up. They're actually filling in down through there. Tom Bailey has took a share into that company, and he's really improved that big time. He's complied with everything I've asked from him. He's widened his driveway out, so the trucks coming in and coming out can try to stay in the one lane when they come out. The problem is, there's a hill coming down. It's even bad for people trying to get on Country Club Road. It's really a dangerous intersection right there even. It's 40 miles an hour there. Like I said, I've sat out there. I've sat at Schick's and watched trucks turn in, turn out. I've watched people come over the hill. What I would like to do is take that from 40 to 30, and I would like to take it to across the tracks to the east. Once you cross Country Club and the tracks, I'm good with 40, you know, back up to 40. But if we can do that, I'd like to take our, our sign out there, you know, and place on top of the hill to try to get these people to slow down coming over the hill. It's, Bobby's done a good job putting signs out there, but I think we can sign it even heavier, because it's really a dangerous intersection. And like I said, I don't think there's any need for, for a traffic study when it's not going to tell us what we need to know. Me sitting there, listening to the residents, listen to, actually to Tom, it's, it's a problem. But like I said, he's even tried to widen the driveway. So, I would like to take that down from a 40 to a 30. And I think it's very, very important, if we could change that ordinance to that, and the sooner the better.
Does his property stop there at that driveway? His property does not go to the east?
No, he, well, it's, it's still Schick. He's still a part of Schick, but he has really upgraded that. I mean, it's a nice facility that is getting heavily used.
Yeah.
So, they're in partnership somehow. I don't know exactly how, but it won't be the first Schick turn-in, but it's down there where they put the new concrete, and he's put a new building up. But I think it's, like I said, I think it's really, really important that I'm going to ask you guys to try to help me...
I think over the last few years, it's gotten, when that gentleman took it over, I think it's gotten very busy there.
Absolutely. It's really busy. I mean, it's nothing to have, you know, an hour's time to have...
I think it's a great idea.
Well, I think it's time to do a study, because you folks are probably too young to remember, is it 300, 350 that Irving's is on? 350. Years ago, they took that hill down, and, and Irving's did it, and they went clear to the bottom. And that's when they put their tunnel in, I believe. So, maybe we need to do something like that, because I have been out there, and that hill's bad anyway. But for now, we can slow them down, but we need to do some study about that.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that, but for the meantime, I mean, there is no way, there's no way of taking that hill out, if it, if it was even possible.
Well, they took the one out on 350.
But I don't have the, I don't have the money for that, Sherry. There's no...
I'm saying, maybe he would do it or work with us.
John, you'd have to redo the ordinance, change the speed limit.
Yes.
And all that anyways, wouldn't you?
Yeah, you would have, probably have to do a public hearing as well to do all that.
Right. So, I mean, we could send somebody out with the counter just to throw across there in between those times, right?
Yes. Angie, I think, has those.
So, I could have that put up between the time that you have to do that, and we'd have to have a public hearing at our next meeting, right?
Get that set up, yep.
And you can have them post that today, right?
Um...
Or get out there, yeah.
Yeah, we get, well, not today, but I get to do it tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Would you, would you be better off putting one of the signs up, so we can document speeds, too?
Bobby, can you move a sign out there?
Move one, move one...
Just get a locate, we can...
Move one of the digital signs over there, so we can get actual speeds and...
Can, can we set that sign, instead of setting it at 440 to slow down? Can we set it where we can just tell, does it go into a...
We can program, we can program whatever.
I'd rather program it where we don't have it set for 40.
I agree, I agree.
Okay, so, my other one, so I, I'm understanding a little bit more that we're going to probably have to have these studies. I thought this was something I could just speed up, so I apologize for that.
Well, we got to do, we have to change the ordinance and all that. We can't vote on it today.
Okay. The other one I have, have some issues with is 800 East from 32 to Edgewater. We've had... We've had numerous calls. People want speed limit signs up. The problem they, or the thing they did not realize was it's 50. And I have issues. I have a problem with it being 50. It's a 19-foot road. It's, it may be 18, 9 in some areas, and 19, 3 in others. The problem I have is with eight-foot wide semi-trailers hauling grain, and you've got cars driving 50 miles an hour. You don't stay on your side of the road all the time. And we're going to have a lot, there's a lot of ditches out there. I don't know who made it 50, but it was a smart, that's five miles an hour slower than the bypass. It's, to me, it's ridiculous. It's, it's way overkill. I mean, I don't, in a rural area like that, I can't see it being over 40. So.
I agree.
And also, I'll be coming back with you guys. So I guess since I'm here right now, and Angie can get this too, which I was going to say something to her after, but I'll just tell you guys, we have an issue at 100 North, which is Centennial. We've had numerous wrecks. I probably can get with Tony and then find out exactly how many. But Centennial does not stop. 800 East does stop at Centennial, and it's bad vision. And I know quite a few property owners around that have wanted that changed. So maybe look into a four-way stop there.
I know there's already a study on that.
Okay.
On changing the speed limit on that one there.
Okay.
That's a four-way stop.
Yeah, a four-way stop at that intersection, and then decrease, decreasing the speed to 40.
Yeah. And I've talked to Mr. Watkins about that. He's, I actually had an employee that was, was hit there. He just can't see. I'm getting into more other things here, but from, from Centennial all the way to 650 East heading west, it is also 50 miles an hour, but as soon as it hits 650 East, it's back down to 40. So I don't know, you know, something we need to work on too, but I have issues with these roads as narrow as they are, being rural roads. I have issues for safety for the drivers. I have real big issues with 50 miles an hour.
John, can you do an ordinance on that?
Yes.
Because we, same thing, public hearing, and that way we can do all these at the same time.
You have any other questions?
When you make the roads better, they pick up that speed.
Yeah, exactly. It's just, it's just width, you know, and people don't realize these semi-tractors are, you know, wide. So, thank you very much.
Jeff, you doing all right?
Well, I think we also have, do we want to do Division Road and 800 West?
Yeah, I was hoping to rock this all in one because the expense of advertising's gotten.
Did you look at corn, is cornbread ours?
We're out on cornbread.
From Hoyt to, like, that's city from.
Cities.
To the Tillsen. That's only 30.
We've been doing a study at Division and 800 West. We recommend a four-way stop there as well. And there is not a current speed limit on 800 between Jackson and River Valley, so we are recommending a 40 mile per hour. John, if you want to give me a call this week, we can go over all those locations.
Well, I need to do the public hearing pretty quick because you have to have a public hearing 10 days before the meeting, and we've got two weeks.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm available any time today.
Okay, thanks.
Sheriff?
So Tony Skinner, Delaware County Sheriff. So Commissioner King and Commissioner Henry probably remember from the Police Academy, but just for Tony and for everybody else's information, all county roads, the prima facie speed limit is 50 miles an hour unless it's marked otherwise. So unless those roads are marked, they're all 50. Every county road is 50. So that's just the way it is.
Yeah, I discussed that with Mr. Humbert last week about the marking.
Thank you, Tony. I appreciate it.
Learn something every day. Okay. Weekly and monthly quarterly reports. Waits major, appreciate their report. Payment of claims of $1,038,233.14 and the ARP claims of $21,674.17.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Ms. Reagan?
Yes, thank you. Now it's time for the public. Any questions, John? Anything on Facebook, please?
No, nothing on Facebook.
Seeing none. What's your pleasure?
I make motion to recess.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Reagan?
Yes. Stay safe.